Good morning. I would like to call this joint public hearing of the House Children and Youth Committee to order. Just a reminder, this hearing is being recorded and broadcasted. Please make sure your cellphones are silent. I ask all members use a microphone when speaking and make sure that the green light is on. We will begin with committee member introductions for both committees. If everyone could please share your name and legislative district. Sorry. Good morning. I'll bring the committee to order. We'll begin with committee member introductions for both committees. If everyone could please share your name and legislative district, we will begin with introductions for the House Children and Youth Committee, followed by introductions for the House Judiciary Committee. I will begin. I'm State Representative Jeanne McNeil, 133rd District, Lehigh County, and we'll go to my left.
Thank you, Chair McNeil. I am State Representative Kate Clunk. I wear two different hats here today. I am the chair for the Republicans of the Children and Youth Committee, and I'm also a member of the Judiciary Committee. I represent Southwestern York County, and I look forward to hearing more from the panel today about these bills, considering juvenile justice. It's such an important topic, and look forward to hearing your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joe Hogan. I represent the 142nd District, which is portions of Lower Bucks County.
Good morning. Representative Kudjuski, District 188, Philadelphia.
Good morning, folks. Chris Piele, representing the House District 156 in West Chester, Chester County.
State Representative Malu McKenzie. I represent the 131st District, part of Northampton County, part of Lehigh County, and the top part of Montgomery County.
And I'm John Schlegel. I represent the 101st Legislative District in the heart of Lebanon County.
Jim Rigby, 71st District, Cambria, Somerset County.
Good morning, folks. Thank you for coming. I'm Jamie Flick. I represent Lightcombing and parts of Union County, which is the Williamsport area. Again, thank you for being here.
I think we're going to go to the Judiciary Committee. Am I right, Chair? Tim Briggs, State Rep. Montgomery County, the 149th District, and the Democratic Chair of the Judiciary Committee.
State Representative Emily Kincaid. I represent the 20th House District.
Jim Rigby, 71st District, Cambria, Somerset.
Thank you, everyone. The purpose of today's hearing is to discuss juvenile justice awareness legislation. Specifically, three bills: House Bill 144, sponsored by Representative Kudjuski; House Bill 1385, sponsored by Representative Kincaid; and House Bill 1936, sponsored by Representative Bellman. House Bill 144 discusses juvenile diversion. House Bill 1385 discusses juvenile fines and fees. House Bill 1936 discusses total secure detention time. Chair Clunk, would you like to offer any opening remarks? Chair Briggs, would you like to offer any remarks?
Just to thank you for organizing today. This is a joint hearing, but you and your staff really took the lead, so I want to thank you for that. Juvenile justice recommendations were made a number of years ago. We tackled some of this last session. Didn't get much traction, but I'm really looking forward to learning more and trying to move these really important bills in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Briggs. We will begin by hearing an introduction of the issues, followed by three separate panels. Bob Tomassini, Executive Director, Juvenile Court Judges Commission, will provide an introduction and context setting. Mr. Tomassini, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning. Good morning, chairpersons and members of the committees. My name is Bob Tomassini. I'm the Executive Director of the Juvenile Court Judges Commission, also known to many as the J.C. J.C. We were established by statute in 1959 and are made up of nine judges nominated by the Chief Justice and appointed by the Governor. The judges appointed to our commission bring deep experience and represent the diversity of Pennsylvania's juvenile courts, ranging from Potter and Clarion Counties to Philadelphia and Allegheny Counties. Our role is pretty straightforward. We set standards for juvenile court practice, advise courts on how to care for delinquent and dependent youth, administer grants to support county juvenile probation services, and promote evidence-based practices across the Commonwealth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about our juvenile justice system, a system that's often misunderstood, but it's resilient, evolving, and always striving to improve. Pennsylvania has long led the way in juvenile justice reform. In fact, in 1995, 30 years ago, we became the first state to codify the principles of Balanced and Restorative Justice, or BARG. That framework is built on three goals: community protection, keeping the public safe through smart supervision and risk-informed decisions; accountability, ensuring youth take responsibility and repair the harm they've caused; and competency development, helping youth build the skills they need to thrive. In 2010, we took another major step forward with the Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy, or JJSES. This statewide initiative, developed in partnership with the Pennsylvania Council of Chief Juvenile Probation Officers and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, ensures that every decision we make is backed by research, data, and a commitment to continuous improvement. Thanks to these efforts, our system today looks a lot different than it did in 2010. Written allegations are down by 43%. Written allegations are the charging document police file with juvenile probation departments alleging a child has committed a delinquent act. Detention and residential placements have dropped by more than half. Placement costs have decreased significantly. In fiscal year 2009, 2010, over $300 million were spent on placement costs statewide. In fiscal year 2023, '24, the most recent data we have available, that figure was reduced to $145 million, representing $155 million fewer dollars spent on placement costs. Of youth exiting the system in 2024, 92% did not commit a new offense while under supervision. 91% did not have a technical violation of probation while under supervision. 94% of these youth were in school, in vocational training, or were employed. 89% completed their restitution obligation. And of significance and great importance, our recidivism rates have fallen drastically, dramatically. For cases closed in 2010, the recidivism rate was over 21% of youth who were exiting the juvenile justice system. Our most recent data from 2022, that figure has been reduced to over 11%, a significant decrease in youth reoffending following their involvement with the juvenile justice system. These aren't just numbers. They reflect safer communities, meaningful accountability, and young people getting the support they need. While BARG remains our foundation, every case is handled individually, with courts and juvenile probation departments tailoring decisions to each youth's unique needs and circumstances. We rely on validated tools: risk assessments, trauma screens, and mental health screenings to help guide those decisions. And regular case reviews are required, where a youth's progress is reviewed by a judge every three months for youth emplacement and at least every six months for youth in the community. These review hearings play a huge role as to how long a youth remains in placement or under supervision. J.C. J.C. also maintains one of the most robust, comprehensive juvenile justice data systems in the country. Our website is full of reports and studies that show how the system is performing and where we can improve. Today's hearing focuses on bills related to detention, fines and fees, and diversion. And while those are undoubtedly important, critically important, there are some other recommendations in this legislation that could reshape our system in ways that the commission does not support. We are concerned about raising the minimum age of jurisdiction from 10 to 13. We are concerned to mandate, mandate diversion without considering risk levels or the individual circumstances that each case brings. We are also concerned about counting time, time served in detention toward placement duration. But here's what we do support: eliminating most fines and fees, except for the crime victim's compensation fee and a contribution to a restitution fund determined by the juvenile court judge. Many courts have already eliminated most fines and fees and costs. We also support using diversion whenever appropriate with decisions that are based on each youth's unique circumstances, and limiting detention and placement to cases where it's absolutely and truly necessary and for the shortest time possible. The issue of youth languishing in detention is not about policy. It's about capacity. Between 2010 and 2019, pre-pandemic, we saw a 75% reduction in the use of secured detention. We observed a similar drop or reduction in the use of residential placements, which led to facility closures. In addition, the pandemic, it led to program closing and post-pandemic staffing shortages. This created a dual crisis: not enough secure beds, not enough residential services to meet county needs, as well as challenges with supporting community-based services. With strategic changes made by the Bureau of Juvenile Justice Services and efforts by our private provider network, we've made substantial progress. The placement waitlist in 2023 was over 170 youth, which led to those youth, many of them sitting in detention for many months before a placement became available. As of today, the waitlist has been decreased to 18, a remarkable reduction. Coincidentally, the wait time for youth from detention to placement has been reduced to under 20 days. Again, the real issue isn't detention. It's the lack of services. Many providers have not recovered from the pandemic. Rising costs and workforce challenges make it hard to operate. Our provider community has long been a cornerstone of Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system. Today, it's struggling, and without urgent support, we risk losing the full range of services youth and families rely on, with many of those services, most of those services, delivered in the community. Our commission is also concerned about proposals that limit judicial discretion. Our system is built to treat each case individually. A one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. And ironically, it pushes us toward a criminal justice system model, just as that system is adopting many of our practices that we have been doing since 2010. We understand that many of the proposals stem from the Pennsylvania Juvenile Justice Task Force report. While we appreciate the intent of that report, we urge caution. The data informing that report is nearly eight years old. Much has changed since that time. And while the overarching goals were broadly supported, the details proposed to achieve these goals were not universally endorsed. As they say, the devil's in the details, and while we can certainly support many of the overarching goals, the way to achieve those goals raised grave concern by our commission. And the task force lacked key voices. There were no victim representatives, and only one provider represented on the task force, key stakeholders, and key voices to our juvenile justice system. Despite that, our system continues to move forward, and here's what recent improvements look like in our system. For those youth remaining in their communities, the median length of supervision statewide dropped from nine months in 2017 to six months in 2024. Statewide placement durations have also been shortened from 10 months in 2017 to eight months more recently. The cumulative impact: youth have spent over 1 million fewer days in placement last year compared to a decade ago. Additionally, diversion is widely and effectively used, particularly for low-risk and first-time justice-involved youth. 83 of youth identified as low-risk were diverted from an adjudication. 84% of all first-time justice-involved youth were diverted from an adjudication. Diversion is also being used across the state through various ways, including school diversion programs, police diversion, youth aid panels, assessment centers, and other programs. As you consider legislative action, we respectfully ask that you use the most current data that is available, that you continue to engage with practitioners who practice and implement these policies every day, and also recognize practices already in place and build upon what's already working. We remain committed to a juvenile justice system that's fair, effective, and grounded in research. Starting in 2027, all counties receiving state funding from the Juvenile Court Judges Commission will be required to use a mental health screening tool, a trauma screen, and a detention risk assessment at intake, in addition to the current requirement of using a validated risk assessment instrument. Many counties already use each of these tools, and we're using the next year to ensure policies are in place and staff are properly trained. We are also facing some serious challenges, as everyone in this room recognizes. Youth needs are more complex than ever. Our provider network is shrinking. The juvenile probation services grant, as I just stated, the funding, the only state funding provided to support juvenile probation officer salaries, has not increased since 2013. It now covers less than 20% of all juvenile probation officer salaries statewide, compared to the 80% reimbursement of our child welfare workers who deserve every penny that they receive. Our juvenile probation officers are highly skilled professionals. Most are trained and proficient in administering the validated assessment instruments and screening tools, as mentioned earlier. They use motivational interviewing, a collaborative, goal-oriented communication style that helps youth explore and resolve ambivalence about change. They're also trained in supervision models rooted in cognitive behavioral therapy principles, which focus on helping youth recognize and change harmful thinking and behavior patterns. Today, our juvenile probation officers are seen as agents of change, not just monitors of compliance. They've moved beyond the old model of surveillance and enforcement and instead focus on building relationships, fostering accountability, and supporting long-term success. Juvenile probation officers, courts, and service providers are working with significantly fewer youth than in previous years, as confirmed by our data. However, the youth they do serve present increasingly complex challenges. Many exhibit aggressive, violent, and high-risk behaviors that require specialized attention. To effectively support these individuals, we need highly skilled professionals who can accurately assess risk and needs, develop evidence-based interventions tailored to those assessments, and provide the ongoing support necessary to help them become productive citizens and productive members of society. These youth are not concentrated solely in large urban areas. They live in every county across the state. When the task force was announced, its stated goal was to build on the past successes and evaluate current challenges. But throughout that process, our system's strengths and successes were overlooked. Very little did we hear about our successes and our strengths. At times, it felt like we were under attack. Across Pennsylvania, nearly 200 juvenile court judges, 1,200 juvenile probation officers, and thousands of service providers have dedicated their careers to serving youth, families, and victims. It was stated throughout the task force that any contact with a judge or juvenile probation officer is inherently harmful. That is not only inaccurate, it's disheartening and demoralizing. Next week, we'll host our annual juvenile justice conference, where nearly 900 professionals will gather to share knowledge and strengthen collaboration. Additionally, we're proud that approximately 75 youth will also participate, with many of them being recognized for their resilience and their achievements. I invite each of you to attend to see what really is occurring within our juvenile justice system. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your continued support and commitment to Pennsylvania's youth, families, victims, and communities.
Thank you, Mr. Tomassini. I'd like to make note that Chairman Kaufman is now here. The first panel will share information related to juvenile diversion, House Bill 144, sponsored by Representative Kudjuski. We're joined by Donald F. Corey, Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, Chester County. Mr. Corey also serves as President of the Pennsylvania Council of Chief Juvenile Probation Officers. Dr. Brian Lovins, Principal, Justice Systems Partners, and Hanay Mason, Stonely Emerging Leader, Fellow, Youth Art and Self Empowerment Project. Mr. Corey, you may begin.
Thank you. As stated, I am Chief in Chester County Juvenile Probation. So I'm breathing it? All right. Thank you. All righty. Off to a great start. Established in 1967, the Chiefs Council has collaborated with the Juvenile Court Judges Commission and other system stakeholders to develop and promote best practices in juvenile probation across the Commonwealth. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about diversion. I'll also mention that I have known Mr. Tomassini for over 40 years, and some of what he has said, I'm going to try not to repeat. We apparently think alike and have been in the system for a while together. In talking about diversion, I think it's important to talk about it in the context of the juvenile justice mission and some of the changes that Mr. Tomassini outlined that have occurred in the system over the last 10 to 15 years. The Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy that he referenced was built on two very connected ideas. The first is that we would use the best available research to guide every decision we make, and the second, that we share a set of common core beliefs on how to enact that research into practice. And one of those core beliefs is critical to the discussion on diversion, and that is a core belief that youth should be diverted from formal court processing whenever appropriate. The decision of when that's appropriate is not automatic. It requires careful consideration of many factors within the framework of Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system. Mr. Tomassini talked about Balanced and Restorative Justice, the mission of the juvenile justice system, and will emphasize that it has three equally important goals: community safety, the right of every Pennsylvanian to be safe and feel free from crime; accountability, ensuring that youth take responsibility for their actions and repair the harm they've caused; and competency development, helping youth build the skills they need to become responsible, competent, and contributing members of society. When we talk about diversion, it's important to remember that every delinquent act causes a harm, even if the act seems minor. That harm can extend beyond the direct victim to include families, schools, and neighborhoods. In Pennsylvania, we have a victim impact curriculum, which helps youth understand how one bad decision can have a ripple effect. So as an example, take an assault at school. Two or more juveniles assault another juvenile at school. Obviously, the direct victim is impacted by that incident. But what about the other students at that school that observed that assault? Some students might be traumatized, fearful to attend school. They might actually have attendance issues out of that trauma from seeing that assault. Other students might feel the need to carry weapons to protect themselves, and that can lead to a whole host of unintended outcomes. Our goal is to reduce the probability of delinquent acts being repeated. Reducing recidivism is the underlying goal to achieve the overarching goal of community protection. The System Enhancement Strategy was developed essentially because we learned that what we had been doing wasn't working. Mr. Tomassini talked about the compliance monitoring approach. Essentially, it was a one-size-fits-all model. The majority of youth were adjudicated delinquent, placed on probation, had generic and very similar supervision conditions, and the probation officer's role was simply to monitor the compliance with those conditions. That approach was found to have absolutely no impact in reducing recidivism. What was found to work was identifying youth at higher risk to reoffend and individualizing their supervision plans to meet their individual needs. Mr. Tomassini talked about the validated risk assessments and behavior screens that the probation officers now implement. These are designed to help us get a more complete understanding of each person's risks, needs, and strengths. This allows us to match them to the most effective interventions. The majority of youth who enter our system are low-risk. They are essentially acting like teenagers, and with minimal or no guidance, are probably going to mature out of this behavior with little or no intervention from us. Our mission is to not mess them up. We want them diverted. We want them out of the system. However, when youth repeat and come back into the system, those are the youth that we tend to find have more deep-rooted issues that need to have more intensive interventions. The understanding of how low-risk kids should be diverted has led to significant improvements in our practices. Hopefully, this isn't repeating everything, but in 2024, over 80% of first-time low-risk youth were diverted from formal court processing, and over 90% of those youth completed diversion successfully without reoffending. Those that come back, we often see have deeper issues, whether it's trauma-related, whether it's mental health, behavioral health needs. When they come into our system, they've had 10 to 15 to 16 years of whatever life experiences have produced the individual in front of us, and sometimes some of those risk factors are not easily overcome or quickly overcome. In Pennsylvania, the intensity and duration of our services are determined by each youth's risk and needs, not by the nature of the offense. No two incidents are the same simply because they result in similar charges, and no two youth are the same simply because they are charged with a similar offense. Each decision requires discretion and balance and must reflect the mission of Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system, one that promotes community safety, accountability, and personal growth. At times, it appears legislation is based on the perspective that the system is broken. For those of us working in the field, the system is not broken. It is not perfect. It is a work in progress. It's a system that's evolving, improving, and making real differences in young people's lives. Recidivism, ah, that's a tough word. You try it now. Recidivism rates have fallen while diversion rates have increased. We believe the system has made significant progress over the last decade and look forward to continuing this work. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to Pennsylvania's youth and communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lovins. I'd like to make note that Representative Bellman's here. Next up is Hanay Mason.
Good morning. My name is Hannah Victoria Mason. I work at an organization called YASP, the Youth Art and Self Empowerment Project, that's based in Philadelphia. For the past two decades, YASP has been at the forefront of youth justice advocacy, fighting for the end of the practice of direct file, running a youth-led participatory defense fund, producing weekly arts workshops for youth emplacement, and in 2021, starting Healing Futures, which is Philadelphia's first youth restorative justice diversion program. Healing Futures takes young people through a comprehensive process of accountability, teaching them about personal integrity and values, helping them make better choices and give meaningful apologies, and ultimately preparing them to meet face-to-face with the person they harmed in order to make amends and to create a collaborative plan for repair. the person they harmed in order to make amends and to create a collaborative plan for repair. For the past two years, I have been tracking the progress and impact of Healing Futures as a Stonely Foundation Fellow. After an extensive data collection process in which I surveyed and interviewed all the past participants of the first two years of Healing Futures, which included the young people responsible, the persons harmed, their family, and community members, and following a thorough analysis and drafting period, I released a report of my findings called Healing Futures: A Restorative Justice Response to Philadelphia's Youth Punishment System. That came out in September, a little bit more than a month ago. The full report is available to be downloaded and read on YASP's website. I also have fact sheets for anybody who's interested. The report shows that the practice of restorative justice diversion, ones like the Healing Futures model, are overwhelmingly effective in producing more positive outcomes than traditional criminal proceedings or incarceration. 100% of those surveyed and interviewed said they were satisfied with their experience and the outcomes of the restorative justice diversion process, with most of them also saying that they would not only recommend Healing Futures or restorative justice diversion to somebody in a similar case, but also that they would be willing to go through another restorative justice process in the future. The restorative justice diversion process gives participants a variety of possible positive outcomes, including support for young people's personal growth and development. That might look like job placement, housing support, educational opportunities. It provides people who are victimized more likely, they are more likely to receive restitution. They are given the ability to get answers, provide a questions like why something happened to them, and they're also able to reclaim agency and be included in the restorative plan of the young person. Family and supporters are also relieved and hopeful, knowing that the young person was able to remain in community and have this, have their situation resolved within the community. Healing Futures and other restorative justice diversion programs have also demonstrated low rates of recidivism. In the first two years of Healing Futures, only one young person of the first 30 participants was rearrested and later adjudicated delinquent. That's a 3% recidivism rate. In all, Healing Futures has helped over 60 young people, and is positioning itself to expand not only to take on even more cases, but cases of more serious harm. Restorative justice diversion and other diversion programs offer a wealth of positive pathways for personal, communal, and social repair and possibility. And my report is just part of the growing body of evidence that confirms that restorative justice diversion and diversion programs more broadly should not only be seen as viable alternatives, but seriously considered as potential defaults and solutions for young people. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Lovins online.
Good morning, Chair Persons McNeil and Clump, and distinguished members of the Children and Youth Committee and Judiciary Committee. I'm really excited to take this opportunity to testify today on the critical topic of youth diversion programs. My name is Brian Lovins, and I'm here to provide the committee with information on the current research, on the effectiveness of diversion programs for youth, and to help the committee while considering House Bill 144. I have a PhD in criminology and have worked as a researcher, practitioner, and scholar in juvenile justice for the past 30 years. I'm excited to be here today to help Pennsylvania continue to enhance the juvenile justice system. Today, I'm presenting research examining what the evidence tells us about youth diversion programs. The question before us is simple but profound: Do diversion programs work? And if so, how can Pennsylvania continue to implement them effectively and successfully across the entire state? So let me start with the research findings, and then we'll sort of talk about meta-analysis. And so I know all of you are familiar with meta-analysis, but as you think about studies, we see individual studies often and hook into a single study. But what we find is that the compilation of studies or a meta-analysis, a study of studies, is really the space in which tapes a broad number of studies and then looks at what is the common findings or the common amount of research. And so when we look at these studies across the country, we find that diversion and deflection programs are really compelling. While often, they sort of separate ourselves or contradict what we believe at times, that holding kids accountable by a conviction or adjudication is the necessary step to repair harm, what we've found is throughout almost all of research, although there is a little bit of research that has identified some areas where diversion and deflection programs are not successful, for the most part, we find that diversion and deflection programs do not release a young person out of accountability, but obviously provides a path to success for the future. And so what we do know is that youth who receive diversion pre-charge, right? And so when we talk about a charging instrument or a decision of charging and moving people forward to the more formal side of the court, youth who receive diversion pre-charge experience 1.7x fewer arrests. That keeps young people out of the system and sort of doesn't create that labeling piece of having a delinquent act or adjudication, and allows them to still receive services from the community. Youth diverted after being charged still has a positive outcome, and so 1.5x fewer arrests for young people that were diverted after being charged but not formally adjudicated. And so we see courts across the country who end up seeing that young person in the court but recognize that their path is a different space, and so have the previous speakers talking about assessment and individualizing interventions. We still see that judiciary and probation departments make great decisions on who needs to be diverted at that point as well. And then ultimately, what we do know is across the system, and we heard earlier testimony about risk level, what we do know is that low-risk, who are diverted out of the system, are 2.4x fewer, have fewer arrests, given a commitment or a low commitment intervention. And so it really sort of establishes and identifies the need for us to provide as many resources as possible to the front end of the system, making good decisions and helping young people get diverted out of the system. And I also agree with the previous speakers in that the system doesn't produce harms in themselves. We have amazing people who work in the system. We have dedicated probation officers and judiciary and parole officers and residential programs and community providers. What it does do, though, is provides a path to success for young people that doesn't get tagged with the criminal tag or the delinquent tag that comes with the system, and not because anyone in the system tags them that way, but we do know that the community holds young people who've engaged in crime and been adjudicated in a different light. And so these aren't marginal improvements. We're talking about cutting future arrests by more than half in many of these cases. That means safer communities, fewer victims, and fewer young lives derailed. So I want to talk about, that's the broader scope. I want to talk about three stories, or three states, and their stories of diversion and deflection that Pennsylvania may look to. While Pennsylvania is a leader in many of these spaces, I think these three states also provide an opportunity for the committee to consider ways to improve and expand the use of diversion and deflection, and as the previous speakers spoke about, thinking about ways that can utilize some of the savings as reductions in state commitments come down and use of residential for repopulating or refunding some of the more local programs. And so these three states are Ohio, Texas, and Kentucky. And so Ohio launched Ohio Reclaim, or Reclaim Ohio, which was a statewide diversion program in 1996, implemented as a pilot, and then in 1998, moved forward, and then through 2014, sort of operated in the same way, which was providing finances or providing funding to communities to serve young people locally through diversion and deflection programs. This resulted in a 67.7% decrease in the number of felony adjudications and reduced the recidivism by 2/3 in that population. So we found that in Ohio, as we reduced young people's adjudications, offered diversion opportunities, fewer kids ended up deeper into the system. They created, and happy to share with the committee through resources, they committed a formula that allowed for that funding to be diverted from the state system back into the communities, which ultimately led to the development of the Ohio Youth Assessment System, the OYAS, which I helped develop for the state, and identifying as the previous speaker spoke about, really identifying the, sort of the need and really the importance of identifying risk levels. One of the things we did find in these diversion studies, both in 2006, 2013, 2018, 2020, and now in 2023, was that consistently, low, moderate, and high-risk youth benefited from diversion at not the same rates, but compared to the counterparts who moved through the adjudication process. And so while I do offer that risk assessment is important and identifying the delinquent needs of a young person to help move them forward in their life, having a diversion option for all three levels was shown to be really significantly important to the success of young people and the safety of the community. As we think about recidivism rates, if we're able to drop recidivism rates for young people 50% through a diversion and deflection sets of programs, we clearly have sort of downstream effects of reduced number of victims, accountability for young people, and still producing public safety. The other thing I think is really important to recognize, and the reclaim studies now had two pretty robust cost analysis or cost-benefit analysis, is for every dollar spent in reclaim, Ohio avoided spending between $13.60 on low-risk young people, all the way up to $57.51 for people identified as high-risk at the state level. And so investing in these diversion programs are not only designed around public safety, but it is actually a real effective way of using our money and ensuring that we're providing services to young people, as the previous speaker sort of identified. Resources in the local community is what helped Ohio sort of move from the state level or heavy residential reliance system to community and keeping young people local. And so I think it's not only doing the right things for kids, but it's about being fiscally responsible to Pennsylvania taxpayers as well. In addition to Ohio, Texas, over the course of the last 20 years, has implemented a strategy to divert young people, and they've seen a 63% reduction of young people adjudicated of a felony as they are able to divert and deflect young people into programming early. That translated to a cost savings of $115 million, and they reallocated $45.7 million of those dollars to local probation departments to provide effective diversion programs. And then ultimately, Kentucky. Kentucky had Senate Bill 200, and they identified first-time misdemeanor complaints were given diversion option, recognizing that, as the previous speaker said, that one mistake shouldn't define a young person's future, and that reduced discretion for county attorneys to override the diversion option was in House Bill 200 as well, and that provided a much more consistent, similar youth, similar circumstance opportunity. And so they enacted that and then found as well, diversion became eligible for first-time felony offenders minus sex offenses and crimes with deadly weapons. And what we find here is that the expansion of it into the felony side, not all felonies are equal, obviously, as we've heard, and that giving opportunities even for kids who make mistakes in the felony side of our system, and giving them diversion options, translated into a significantly better outcome for young people and improved community safety. Youth were two times more likely to be diverted without an increase in recidivism, and so the accountability piece still stood, but giving young people opportunities for local options and providing more individualized reflection and diversion programs for those individuals. And so committee members, I think Kentucky's approach provides a roadmap, as well as Texas and Ohio's, to culminate with the incredible value and amount of work that you've already done in Pennsylvania. And so I want to highlight of these programs, what are some of those programs that are most effective in the literature? Diversion programs that take a restorative approach, not only examining or sort of applying an accountability model, but really connecting to the community and creating amends and helping young people reconnect and belong to a community. It gives victims a voice in the process, and often, they report higher satisfaction when we ask victims what they want, especially as we look at young people who are engaging in delinquent behavior. What victims want is for that person, often a person in their community, to have a better path forward. Community-led programs are often more effective, and so diversion, deflection with probation engagement, but really looking at the community to help provide those programs and non-government organizations to provide some of those diversion programs. Individualized services, and so I really applaud the efforts in 2027 with the additional uptake of screening and mental health screening. We know that young people are suffering often with mental health issues and substance use issues, educational needs, and so having screening and understanding how young people present to be able to provide a better service or a better diversion-deflection opportunity for those youth are incredibly important. And then any system that increases family engagement. We know that being able to increase family units and connect kids to their family are incredibly effective, and so we see things like family functional therapy and those types of interventions, allowing for connecting kids to services for family are incredibly important. And that really making sure that whatever you do and whatever you support across the state, that's developmentally appropriate. I think often, we lump kids or youth into a bucket, but a 10-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old present significantly different, and their needs present significantly different than 17- and 18-year-olds. And so really recognizing the flexibility of diversion-deflection to be age-appropriate as well. So I appreciate the time and the committee's effort in really thinking about how to improve Pennsylvania's diversion system, and happy to take any questions that the committee may have, but really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the amazing effects that diversion and deflection programs have on our system for young people.
Thank you. I want to note that Representative Caniata, Representative Boyd, and Representative Walsh are in attendance. The second panel will discuss juvenile fines and fees, House Bill 1385, sponsored by Representative Kincaid. We're joined by Nadi Mazivar, I apologize if I pronounce it wrong, Senior Attorney, Juvenile Law Center, and Allison Ware, Associate Director of Clinical Programs and Assistant Professor. She will be online. And then we have Thomas R. Klein, School of Law of Duquesne University. Ms. Mazivar, would you like to start?
And its provisions eliminating most juvenile system fees and juvenile system fines. For over 50 years, Juvenile Law Center has fought for youth in this Commonwealth and around the country. Along with partners, we lead the National Debt-Free Justice Campaign, which is dedicated to ending harmful and unjust fees and fines imposed on youth and their families in the justice system. And just yesterday, we published a new report, Heavy Burdens: The Weight of Juvenile Fees and Fines in the Keystone State with Data on Fees and Fines Assessed in Pennsylvania and Their Effect on Youth. So today, I would really just like to take a moment to share the important lessons that we learned in our research for this report, as well as our advocacy from around the country and around the Commonwealth. So first, just to start off, most importantly, juvenile fees and fines harm youth. Generally, as a very common sense notion, we understand that children do not have the money to pay juvenile fees and fines. Pennsylvania restricts the number of hours that children, especially those under 16, can work, and youth- can work, and youth currently, like many others, are facing a very tough job market with competition from college graduates, automation, and economic uncertainty. When youth cannot pay, the impact is very devastating. They can be pulled deeper into the justice system, face burdensome civil judgments, accrue debt, and experience heightened family tensions. Pennsylvania public defenders explain that youth have been put in placement or stayed longer in placement due to unpaid fees and fines, and parents and youth have reported having to choose between, for example, paying for groceries or paying off fees and fines. So very significant harms on young people when fees and fines are assessed. But then second, in contrary, you know, on the opposite end, juvenile fees and fines provide very limited financial gain to counties. Juvenile Law Center and our colleagues at Drexel Law School analyzed fiscal data provided by the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts on fees assessed and collected by Pennsylvania counties from 2018 to August 2024. Our analysis first showed a number of different things, and this is all available in our report, which we can provide a copy of, but I wanted to highlight two points particularly here. First, it does take youth a long time to pay off fees and fines. And so, for example, by August 2024, counties were able to collect only an average of 58% of the fees and fines that were assessed in 2023. So several months later, youth still had not paid off their fees and fines. And then further, the amount that counties are able to collect is a very minuscule portion of their county budgets. In 2022, fees and fines collected constituted less than 1% of the county total revenue in every single county in Pennsylvania, and this revenue is further limited by collection Third, juvenile fees and fines really don't hold youth accountable appropriately in an appropriate way. They are a poor mechanism for repairing harm and allowing youth to take responsibility for their actions. So when we look at juvenile fees, they're often levied to pay for administrative items like postage stamps, computer fees, or requiring youth to pay for things like their electronic monitoring. And these are not designed as ways for youth to really address and repair harm. They are, although ineffective, really kind of funding mechanisms for counties. So they don't really hold up to this standard of accountability that we're looking for in the justice system. On the other side, fines are maybe designed to be a repair mechanism, but youth cannot acknowledge and repair harm through fines that they can't afford. Under the current system, youth who come from wealthy families can easily pay off their fines or have their parents do so without expending any effort or repairing any harm that they caused. Poor youth who cannot afford fines themselves languish in debt and the juvenile justice system, or they pass the financial burden on to their families. And finally, juvenile fees and fines undermine community safety. A growing body of research has found that monetary sanctions increase youth recidivism and therefore undermine community safety. A 2017 criminology study of youth in Allegheny County found that financial penalties increase the likelihood of recidivism in youth. A follow-up study in 2023 of more than 1,000 cases in Florida found that youth who owed fines and fees had higher recidivism rates than those who did not, even when controlling for age, gender, and type of offense. And the more they owed, the larger the increase. Over our speakers today, we have really heard about the purpose of the juvenile justice system and how it really is grounded in this balanced attention that looks at community protection, youth accountability, and supports that enable children to become responsible and productive members of the community. And what we have learned through our research, through talking to young people, by looking at the data and working on this all around the country, is that fees and fines undermine each of these objectives. Pennsylvania can best support youth in the justice system, their families, and the community by prohibiting courts and counties from charging juvenile system fees and fines. And we urge Pennsylvania to join a very growing movement. There are 24 states around the country that have passed fee and fine reform all across the country, all across the political spectrum, so Pennsylvania would really be joining a growing movement. We've heard a lot today about how Pennsylvania is a leader in so many juvenile justice issues, but we are somewhat falling behind in this area. So we urge, you know, consideration passage of 1385 and this reform. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to note that Representative Bonner is here. Next up is Allison Ware.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My comments will be similar to my colleague that just went ahead of me, but I believe that it highlights sort of the overarching issues among all children. I would like to share my experience and how I have seen costs and fines negatively impact the lives of young people, specifically in Allegheny County, but also across the Commonwealth. From summary citations to juvenile court fines, costs and fees imposed by courts on children, and their families are harmful at every stage. I began my career as a public defender and spent many years working with children charged in juvenile court and at local magistrates. Universally, costs and fines associated with a child's case add extra pressure and stress during an already stressful time. Court proceedings as a whole have an overwhelmingly negative impact on children and their families. The tension within families from court proceedings is only heightened when the child is required to pay several hundred or even thousands of dollars, many times of which the family cannot afford. Across the Commonwealth, many judges require children to pay these court costs, even when they are not old enough to gain employment, to help offset the cost. Children currently as young as 10 can be charged in juvenile court in Pennsylvania. I have personally seen 10-year-olds that have been assessed court costs and associated fees. To put into perspective, 10-year-olds are traditionally in the fourth to fifth grade, far too young to earn their own money. Also, many children who are able to work need to use the money that they earn to help with family expenses. The whole family suffers the cost if the cost of court fines and fees need to be paid. Throughout my years representing children, several young children have remained on probation for additional months due to court costs, fines, and fees being their only outstanding obligation. I have seen children in the juvenile court system remain on probation for an extended period of time due to simply an inability to pay fees. In the contrary, families with financial resources pay these costs for their children, but that is a luxury that many families do not have. I would like to share two quick stories about personal young people that I've represented. I once represented a young woman who had completed the terms of her probation successfully, with the exception of paying lab fees and court costs that totaled several hundred dollars. Despite repeated motions and oral pleas to waive the outstanding financial obligation, the judge was initially unwilling. The young woman remained on probation for an additional six to nine months, simply due to her family's inability to pay the money. During that time, she became incredibly frustrated, feeling as though all of her hard work to successfully complete her other terms had no reward because she continued to be on probation. She was too young to gain employment for herself, and her family did not have the additional funds to contribute. Finally, we were able to convince the judge to waive some of the costs, and her case closed, but not without the emotional toll on that child and her family. Another client of mine was particularly memorable with regard to the family's fear of costs and fines. The child had a significant disability and accidentally ran his bike into a neighbor's garage door and caused damage. When we returned approximately three months later for his initial review hearing, the mother of my client had an envelope with her full of small bills. When I asked the mother where she had gotten the money, she told me that the family had been saving every little bit of money to be sure that her son's court costs could be paid. When asked, she also confessed that they had foregone paying some household bills to ensure that they had enough money to pay. She indicated to me that her son was her first priority, and simply put, families should not have to choose between paying their utility bills and their child's court costs. I appreciate everyone's time and attention here today, and thank the committee for their efforts on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to note that Representative Carroll is here. The third panel will discuss total secure detention time, House Bill 1936, sponsored by Representative Bellman. We are joined by Sarah Jacobson, Executive Director, Public Defender Association of Pennsylvania, and Christina Zogar. Ms. Jacobson?
Try it again. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sarah Jacobson. I'm the Executive Director of the Public Defender Association of Pennsylvania. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I want to thank the Children and Youth Committee and the Judiciary Committee for holding this hearing and allowing me the opportunity to speak. The Public Defender Association of Pennsylvania, PDAP, is a nonprofit association. We train and support public defenders across the state. We also seek to be the voice of policy in rooms like this, because we believe that anywhere where decisions are made that impact public defender clients, there should be public defender input, and we try to give that input. While I am primarily here to speak about House Bill 1936, I also want to indicate that PDAP fully supports House Bill 144 and House Bill 1385, for all the reasons you've heard from panelists before me, and I'll reference those bills a little bit later. But as I said, mostly I'm here to talk about House Bill 1936. I'm going to talk about the problem it tries to address, what the bill does, and some concerns that public defenders have expressed to me about the bill and the approach. Now, I realize some of the folks here are pretty expert in the juvenile justice system that may not be everybody. I have some handouts that were up there that I hope will find their way across. To talk about some of the jargon, and I'll reference some of that here for folks who can see this, but this graphic is something that you have there on your handouts. Basically, what I have here is something that shows the terms for the adult system equivalent of what happens in juvenile court. At juvenile sentencing, what juveniles call a disposition hearing, juveniles can be given, they can be diverted, they can be given probation, or they could be placed. When we talk about placement, that's the equivalent of incarceration. When youth are placed, they can be placed in a state-secure facility, that's more like state prison, or they can be placed at a private placement that the county is contracted with. Those placements are a little more like campuses, a little less like prison. What's been happening is that between sentencing and between kids going to placement, there's been a logjam. In the past, historically, youth from Philadelphia have gone to either state-secure or private placements. In recent years, Philadelphia has not been able to successfully contract for private placements. So there are fewer options for Philadelphia youth to go to. All of the Philadelphia youth are now going to state-secure placements. That's a lot of, that's a lot more people going to the state-secure placements. That's created two issues. It's created an issue specifically for Philadelphia youth, that there are not enough spaces in the state-secure placements for them, and it's created long wait times. But not only has that created trouble for Philadelphia, it's created trouble across the state. I was speaking with a juvenile defender from Lehigh County earlier this week. She had a client, E.L., who waited four months to go to the placement facility, to the state-secure facility, because there wasn't room. The additional problem in Philadelphia is that in Philadelphia, youth are being given what are called determinate sentences. That is, a sentence that has a minimum and a maximum. Typically, that's not done in juvenile court. Typically, in juvenile court, you do the treatment. You don't do the time. That means that the time spent to get from here, from disposition to the facility, doesn't count for youth. They don't do the treatment. Their treatment doesn't start until they get to that facility. So the time spent in between, that could be four months, six months, nine months, doesn't count towards their sentence. That's the problem that HP 1936 is trying to address. With all real respect for Mr. Tomasi, Mr. Tomasi, Mr. Tomasi said it's not about policy, it's about capacity. We would argue that the real solution here is to send fewer youth to placement. Now, HP 1936, it says, for every day along that path, when the child hasn't been placed, that that child gets credit, removes time off of the sentence. There are two problems with that, though. One is that that really only does any good for the Philadelphia youth. As far as I know, only in Philadelphia are they given sentences with a minimum and a maximum. So that can really only help the Philly kids, because everyone else is doing the treatment, not the time. The other concern is, and Mr. Tomasi mentioned this, that the language in this bill moves us closer to the adult sentencing scheme, when we're talking about minimums and maximums and time credits. That's terminology used in adult court. It's not the way juvenile courts traditionally sentence youth. And the risk is that other counties outside of Philadelphia start giving sentences with minimums and maximums, rather than letting youth do the treatment instead of the time. I realize that's a lot of kind of jargon in there, which is why I gave you all the handouts, but again, we believe that the real solution here is send fewer youth to placement in the first place. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm really interested in hearing from our next speaker, I think it's probably the most, no offense to everyone else, but the most important speaker we have here, to hear from a youth impacted by the issues I've been trying to explain. So thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Next up is Christina Zogar.
My name is Christina Zogar. I'm 22 years old. I was born and raised in the city of Philadelphia in a single-family home as the oldest of three siblings. At the age of 16, I was involved in a robbery along with six other individuals, where unfortunately someone's life was taken. I myself did not directly take part in taking this life, but was involved in the underlying robbery, so I was also charged with conspiracy to a homicide. I was charged as an adult initially, then was transferred to juvenile court. After months in the county jail, I ended up spending an additional two years at the JJSC before I could go to placement, which is the Juvenile Justice Service Center in Philadelphia. I was committed until my 21st birthday at state placement. After additional two years spent at Dansville, the state placement, they recommended me for release upon good behavior for me to go home. The courts denied their request. Even though I had both completed all my programs as well as school, time commits doesn't do anything to bring about public safety, but it has a significant level of harm to us as children. My community wasn't safer by me coming home at 21 than it would have been for me coming at 19. I did everything in my ability to change and grow, yet none of my growth was recognized. I was peer mentors, leading facility groups, helping with anything I could do while I was in the state placement. I often think of missing my final years of high school, going to prom, graduation, any other normal things that children my age got to experience. I have now been home for two years. I'm in college, working on my own business, and working full-time. I am a contributing member of YSRP Speaker Barrow, fighting to change a system that brings harm to our children in ways they need to be addressed. I often wonder what more I could have accomplished in those two years that I sat at the JJSC awaiting trial, with my time there just being wasted, because it didn't count towards my rehabilitation time at placement. If I could have been home awaiting for the outcome of my case, I would have still been able to be with my family and go to regular school with my personalized classes and not experience the trauma of being locked in a cell all the time because there's not enough staff to watch over us, or not having the right hygiene supplies, or having to get into audations, what I had to defend myself. I hope that a change could happen that's possible for kids going into the system after me to have, if so, whatever, waste of time that they sit in these facilities counted, so that when they do come home, they still have time to experience their childhood. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. Next up, we have questions. Representative Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is this. For any of our panelists, can you talk a little bit about some specific examples of requirements on juveniles under the guise of diversionary practices that require the juveniles to be, to repair the harm that they have caused? Are there some examples of specific practices that are used to achieve that goal?
Yes, for healing futures, we require the young person to do something called a restorative community community conference, which is when they actually meet face-to-face with the person that they harmed. During that conference, they come up with a restorative plan. And so those restorative plans look like a variety of things. That might look like them doing food distributions in their community. We've had some who have done harm reduction with people who are dealing with addiction. We've had some young people who were interested in art and have done creation of murals, or have supported the person they've harmed in doing community service. And so it's really a personalized plan, but the person harmed does have some input in what that looks like.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Representative Kudjuski.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for your time and your testimony and expertise. My questions are for Mr. Thomasini and Mr. Corey. Thank you both for giving us a system-wide approach. Can you, just for the information of the members and audience, just talk a little bit more about the nuts and bolts of a diversion program? Now, we've talked about the data and the system-wide approach, but I think giving folks a little bit of an inside look into what a diversion program is, whether it's one, whether it's one that you know in the system is very effective, what does that look like? And I actually appreciated the question from my Republican counterpart. If you could talk to as well a bit about the ways victim and survivor engagement is involved in those programs, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. For diversion programs, I can't speak for every county around the state, but I know that there's been an effort to try to move closer and closer to almost prevention level of diversion. I can't speak specifically about Chester County. Another, a number of counties several years ago attended a Georgetown Project Initiative designed to address racial and ethnic disparities, and we had to implement a capstone project coming out of that. And coincidentally or not, a lot of the counties came up with school diversion programs. And I didn't really get, go into it during the testimony, but if there's any diversion work done, from my perspective, it should be done in the schools. We, especially coming out of the pandemic, it seemed like youth could not interact in person, and disputes between one or two youth, between social media became 10 youth, and there were fights, assaults, back and forth, one day youth a perpetrator, one day they're a victim. So a lot of our referrals come from the school system, and a lot of the diversion programs that were implemented were targeting that, including one in Chester County, where we have a social worker in the school, and youth are referred to her program to her rather than come to our office. The thing we noticed, though, is diversion is not just keep them out of the system and not have interventions. You have to have interventions. We, I don't want to ever lose her, but we have a social worker that is going above and beyond. They're probably getting more work and more attention in the diversion program than they would if they came through. So when we talk about supporting diversion, it's, we support robust diversion that addresses the kids' needs. As far as accountability purposes, and can you, you know, I spoke too much, and I forgot the second part of your question.
Oh, just, you know, just kind of going back to the previous question around how victim or survivor, if there is one, right? Like, a lot of times with these cases, there may not be like a victim or survivor, but if there is one, how is that restoration being involved in a diversion program?
Okay, so I'll just try to give you a summary of how accountability works. First off, we do have crime victims, workers in our department who will reach out to the victims. We encourage them to have a victim impact statement. They're by law invited to attend any of the hearings, and if they're interested, to be kept abreast of what's going on with the case. There can be restitution ordered if there's a monetary loss for the youth to pay. Our more creative attempts, or I mentioned in my testimony, the impact, victim impact curriculum that we deliver to youth to really help them understand that their act has what we call the ripple effect of affecting others, and that they cause us a harm and they have an obligation to repair it. But probably our most effective is our use of our community service programs, where the youth try to give something back into the community. And we've made an effort over the years, and a lot of the counties have, to have those activities be almost competency development activities, as well as giving it back to the community. So we have youth learning how, some youth have never used a hammer that we encounter. We have youth helping to build park benches that are then installed in the community parks in the summer. So between community service, restitution programs, wholeheartedly support the restorative justice programs, and there are pockets of that. It needs to be, in my opinion, more fully around the state, included in the programs that are offered. Not sure I covered it?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Flick?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for your testimony, and thank the audience for being here today on this critical information. I've only been a state rep for a couple of years, and prior to that, I spent 38 years developing recidivism software, mental health software, drug and alcohol software. So I worked very closely with OMSOSS and D-DAP and the AOPC. One of the issues I saw for all those years is they're sort of in silos. They've got to work together, just like you guys are now working together, and it took a long time at the county level with mental health and the county jails and drug and alcohol. We need to do much better at the state level. You mentioned we're going to have new data coming up, and so I'm a data geek, right? I wrote software forever. But also, on the human side, I was a big brother, big sister for over a decade, fresh air fund with kids for 15 years. I'm a court-appointed special advocate. So if you tie the data part to the human part, one thing that I noticed missing, for the most part today, was a conversation about fatherhood and absentee fathers. What are we doing, or what are you doing, with this current crop of kids, juveniles, to make sure that they don't become absentee fathers, or in some cases, absentee mothers? Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to, you know, acknowledge and appreciate, I appreciate your attention to the data. We are very data-driven. We take pride in the data that we do produce, but we're also proud of the partnerships that we have established over the more recent years. The partnerships with the Department of Human Services is as strong as ever. Our partnership with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency has always been strong. And as you had mentioned, agencies like OMSOSS and others, and especially our educational system, we meet with them regularly to talk about our vision. Our vision, we would, those of us who have been around for, just regardless of the number of years, we talk in our own circles about, wouldn't it be great if we could work ourselves out of business? That's a common conversation that judges have, chief juvenile probation officers have, and system professionals have. We do not want low-risk, no low-need youth entering our system. So we do support engaging other agencies in identifying strategies and services to meet those youth. It is so important, early identification and making sure that, once identified of a certain issue, that there are services available. And again, that's where, that's the real missing piece to many of these conversations. We just do not have the service array that we used to 15 years ago. Getting to your question about fathers, I couldn't agree with you more. And we have emphasized the importance of family engagement and the importance of father and mother and all family engagement. We support family group decision-making. We support other programs and efforts that really engage the family and let them, they are the experts of their families, let them be involved in what happens to their youth. So we do completely support, encourage, and quite frankly, look forward to advancing our goals of greater family involvement, greater collaboration, and let's keep kids out of the system who don't belong there, but let's also recognize there are kids that do belong in our juvenile justice system, and we need to make sure that we have the services available to address their needs.
I do greatly appreciate your work. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Representative Kenyatta?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just mostly want to say thank you to Christina for being here. This is not easy to do, to share your story as candidly as you did, and to exhibit the growth that you've shown, and then to make sure that your experience is informing other people. That's incredibly powerful, and I hope that you take that with you as you continue to make sense of what you could have done with those two years. I know what you're doing now, and what you're doing now is incredibly inspiring. And I just want to thank both of the chairs for putting this committee meeting together. I had a voting meeting prior, so I apologize for being a little, a little late. But Hannah and Sarah are people I've known for a very long time, who are doing great work, and I'm just incredibly proud of the legislation that's being proposed and the work that's being done by all of the testifiers, because in lieu of continued legislation being passed at the, at the speed of the need that exists, you all aren't waiting, and you're finding models that we could look at trying to scale up and implement. And so I'm really, really appreciative of this entire conversation, look forward to supporting all these pieces of legislation, and to learning more from you, and particularly from young people like Christina. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Representative Carroll?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Also, too, I share the semblance of my colleague, Rep. Kenyatta. Christina, thank you so much for coming here today and sharing your story. And I'm the co-prom for the Bill Round-Times for the juveniles with Rep. Bellman. And my question for you, Christina, is listening to your story, I'm someone who spent a lot of time in county prisons with juveniles, right, who, in their situations are being tried as adults. But one of the things I recognize, the strain on the system, especially when it pertains to staffing, when there's a lack of staffing, the default is that young folks are held inside of a cell for an excessive amount of time. And you spoke a little bit about that. And with the aim of the bill, to be able to reduce the amount of time that juveniles are held in custody while they await placement, in which you mentioned about being able to utilize that time to do other things that would have been more beneficial to your life, can you talk a little bit more about your experience of being held in custody and the effects that it's had on your mental health, on social engagement, and some of the other things that could have been done in place of you being in custody?
I'm trying to remember your whole question. So being in, like, when there's not enough staff, we are, I'm sorry. Being held, like, in the facility when there's not enough staff, we are held in our cells for hours if we don't have enough staff. So we don't do stuff like go to school. We won't go to, like, the dining hall. So it'll, like, it'll make people, like, act out. We had more issues when I had to go see therapists in the facility if we can see them. So it did have an effect on me with my mental health, with having to be in a cell. You don't have nothing to do. You can't watch TV. You can't get on the phone. So that affected me, not being able to talk to my family for days, depending on how long it takes for staffing to be available. And other things we could have did, like, if we had groups or people that could come from the outside to come inside to facilitate other things that would have us outside of ourselves, would have been better beneficial for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Bellman. Oh, Chairman, it's one day. Representative Bellman.
Did you just give me a promotion? Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you, Christina. I just wanted to reiterate the comments of my colleagues. And just so you know, too, one thing that I just found out from the previous testimony is that this unfortunately is a uniquely Philadelphia issue. And the other two gentlemen that just spoke as well, we're all from Philadelphia, and we're fighting here to make sure that we can really take care of the young people in Philadelphia, and that they don't have to experience what you experienced. Your testimony today was powerful, and it was poignant, and it really will make a difference. So I just want to let you know that you came to Harrisburg today, and you did make a difference, okay? I wanted to talk to you a little bit just about what your thought process was, you know, during that time. And the way I see this bill is not necessarily trying to get young people to escape accountability, but it is more so trying to make a government more efficient and hold government accountable while young people are in the care of government. So in that, can you just tell me a little bit about, like, did you know why you were waiting so long before you got into placement while you were waiting?
So I did know at first I was waiting for the courts to go through what the outcome of my case would be, what would they, like, sentence me to, or my commitment would be at placement. And then after, when they figured out what that would be, waiting to go to the placement, or what placement I would go to.
Okay, all right. And just talk a little bit or two about your experience in placement and your experience waiting to get in placement. So what did you do? What activities did you do while you were waiting to get in placement? And then what actually took place when you were in placement?
So at the JJSC, it wasn't like, they didn't really have, like, a lot of activities. The only thing we could do when, like, is school, if we could go to school or do school on a unit, when they would just send us, like, paperwork to do. Like, staff would try to make groups, but not a lot of staff, so you can't always, like, do them if they don't have the staff. At the placement, I would do the treatment groups, like, drug and alcohol, the mental health groups, all the other groups they had like Yeah, parent facilitator groups, anything that I could hold. I would parent mentor, like, new people coming in. After I did, like, go through all the groups that I had to do, it was, I didn't have nothing else to do, so I would, like, do the parent mentor, facilitate my own groups. I made up groups that I knew would help other girls coming in.
Awesome, awesome. So while you were waiting to get in placement, it wasn't a lot for you to do. But in, how long were you waiting for?
Two years.
About two years. So two years you were waiting with not a lot to do. And then when you finally got into placement, two years later, after your sentencing, that's when you were allowed to really tap in and hone your leadership skills while you were in placement?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for coming to Harrisburg.
Thank you. Chairwoman Clunk?
Thank you, Chair McNeil, and thank you to our judiciary friends for joining us here today. Thank you to our panelists. This is a very complex topic. We had multiple bills to cover. I still think there's more that we could probably learn on this topic, and I look forward to continuing discussions on this. You know, it, it sounds like, you know, Christina, I, thank you for sharing your story with us today. I don't think we can make decisions on these bills without hearing from the youth who were actually truly impacting in this. So thank you for sharing your personal story. I think, you know, hearing from Mr. Thomasini, things have gotten better in this system since you've gone through it, and I think that's a testament to the hard work of our court system, our probation system, all of the supports that we have in our community. And hopefully, children moving forward will have a better experience than you did. So I think that's really important in sharing your story today, is that, you know, there's proof in the numbers. There's more that we can do. I think these bills are a start. I think there's work that needs to be done based on some of the testimony that we've heard. I think there's challenges in our community supports and those diversionary programs that are out there. I think we need to have a conversation about, you know, where can we add in that space? And I would love to continue this conversation afterwards about, you know, where are those challenges? What are they facing? How can we help in that side? You know, we have these bills, but if we're going to encourage more people to go the diversion process, are we going to increase wait times because we don't have the services available? That's, you know, going to create another problem for our youth, and that's not what we want to do. So I really look forward to continuing the conversation. And Christina, just a question for you. And I know this is not a one-size-fits-all, and I think that's what we've learned here today, is that every single youth is different, right? And giving our system the ability to handle each youth individually is incredibly important. So what was it for you? What was the aha moment, if you had one, that said, "This helped me. This is what turned my life around"? Can you point to a moment where you said, "I am going to improve my life, and I'm not looking back, and I'm looking forward"? What was it for you?
I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure.
And that's okay. That's okay. Well, we're just happy you're here now and doing well and giving back to the community, like you should, and we're just so very proud of your progress. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. With no further questions, I'd like to thank all, Kudjuski, okay, sorry.
All right, just one more. I know we're a little over time. And I'll just talk again, but thank you for surviving the gauntlet of the hearing. I know it's not been easy, but thank you for your leadership. One, just quick question, because I think this phrase has been mentioned a few times during the hearing around low-risk around low risk or high risk. And if anyone on the panel, and I'm guessing related practitioners probably would be best suited, can just talk about what that might mean? And like, what are offenses we are talking about when we refer to low-risk offenders? And does that include nonviolent felonies? You know, does that include, I know we often think about misdemeanors, but does that also include maybe some cases of felonies that are nonviolent in nature where it may be appropriate for someone to be diverted out of the system?
Thank you, Representative, because that is such an important question. Because when we talk about risk levels, what it truly means that you are either low risk, moderate risk, or high risk, or very high risk to reoffend. Every county uses a validated risk assessment instrument, the youth level of service. And our probation officers are provisioned and trained to deliver, to administer this assessment. The results of the assessment indicate it provides an overall risk level to reoffend. But not only does it provide an overall risk level, it identifies areas where the youth is experiencing skill deficits or areas are criminogenic needs that really need to be closely examined. So you may have a young person whose overall risk level to reoffend is low risk, but they may have high needs in areas such as peer relations, family circumstances, drug and alcohol, et cetera. And so when we do talk about risk levels, that really is specific to their risk to reoffend. However, furthermore, the assessment instruments that we utilize break it down to the specific areas where the youth can likely improve and we need to build their skill sets.
May I also?
Please.
Just a note about risk assessment tools. And I realize this is not a hearing about risk assessment tools, so I won't go too far down that rabbit hole. But I will say that risk assessment tools have problems and at times end up unintentionally being a proxy for neighborhoods and race and poverty. When we talk about high risk, low risk, moderate risk, my worry is that really what that reflects is higher or lower levels of intergenerational trauma and poverty, right? And what we've heard from speakers today is that diversion in particular improves outcomes for youth, regardless of how they score on a test that claims that they are more or less dangerous in a risk assessment tool. And just briefly speaking to the issue of reinvestment and having resources across the state for diversion and other interventions, what we learned, and I realize that the Juvenile Justice Task Force report may not be perfect, but we heard from speakers today that when there's increased diversion, fewer youth in detention and in systems, that saves the system money that can be reinvested, particularly in under-resourced and rural communities that don't have as many community supports. So all of this works together to build more resources for more in-depth diversion to better serve youth and keep them out of the system and keep great progress going. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a closing comment, and I appreciate y'all going over time. Because I know a lot of the conversation during this hearing has been about, you know, there being local contacts, wanting some flexibility around the local context and not having one-size-fits-all. And I get that, right? And that's some of the tension that we hold as state legislators, right? We represent our districts, but also we have a responsibility to pass state law that, you know, is uniform amongst the Commonwealth. And I would argue, I think some of that flexibility does also exist in the kind of diversion programs local municipalities create, right? We don't, we're actually not very prescriptive into what a diversion program should look like. We're just saying, let's have some guidance so that a youth who offends in Philadelphia County can have the same opportunities as youth in Cambria County or Cumberland County to be able to not get, you know, institutionalized and have a pathway out of the system. And so I just appreciate, you know, us having this conversation. It's in its nature, right? There is tension between the local context and state. But I think we're trying to get to a solution that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further questions, I would like to thank you all for taking your time. Thank you, Christina. I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And we're adjourned. Thank you.